He's in the back.
In St. Thomas. Would you come forward here?
Said it told you to sit on the front seat.
I know, ma'am. It's like it's person is sitting in the back.
Just we take boat 12s.
Okay.
He's so excited to be here. Bless me extra for that.
True.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, this morning you entrust the care of this county to these elected officials who are before you, entrusted with the care of all the people in this county. Bless each and every one in their task. It is seek, preserve peace, promote liberty and justice for all in their care. In God they trust, and in God they serve, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
You may make the best part of it.
I love your accent.
To the surprise of James, we, ladies and gentlemen, the spirit.
Welcome to ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, everybody swam in this morning, that's good. Let's start with Mr. Willie Allen, Facilities and Maintenance Director. Come tell us what you thought about the buildings.
I looked at the two properties, one was one of the sheriff's offices, is way too small. There's no way we could fit anything there. The other, the Levitts property, it's got a big tractor bar on it, but there's nothing. We would have to build offices. We didn't do a lot of work.
I got you.
Neither one of them worked for us, really.
What about the skate park?
Skate park would be moving ready. We could move right into that.
Well, it does need a lot of work, though.
No, he looked at it.
Yeah.
He said it could make it work.
I think if I'm not mistaken, there's some people that are interested in buying that, aren't there?
Well, they've not gotten back to us. They've asked and looked at it, and then they want to come back and propose it. We'd have to discuss that with the school district.
And it is a voting precinct as well.
Well, where he's at now is but precincts.
No, it's.
Towers.
Yeah, but it's not.
Well, do you want to entertain a motion maybe to approach the school board and see if they're interested in that, assuming this sale falls through?
I don't think there would be a problem. Well, I would just forward to an order requesting them to extend the use agreement that we currently have and advise them that we're going to use it as the facilities maintenance bar.
They were interested in it, but we don't, we'll check back with the buyers. I'd like to sell that.
I said.
Yeah, because if we sold it, we could have enough money to build you a really nice place exactly where you wanted it and which one instead of downtown Gov. Board practically. We need to be in the county, I think. I mean, unincorporated areas.
But all of our buildings are not in it.
Yeah, why would you have to put them in the county?
Not, not all of them, I'd say. Yours is and.
But anyway, at the end of the day, y'all saw the pictures of where he is now. Terrible.
It's massive.
Terrible.
I would like all of y'all to go see the building if you haven't, where they are at Lorraine.
I've seen it.
So do we have a motion to, as Mr. Holloman put it so eloquently?
That's what I said.
I'll make a motion that we contact the school board and renew our.
Use agreement.
Use agreement. And that we inquire about possibly, possibly using it as a mosquito control facility for Harrison County.
Building, facilities and maintenance.
Building and facilities and maintenance, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Will we discuss more?
We have one for discussion.
I'm sorry. What do you mean about the school? Explain that.
They own half.
They own the land.
They own the land.
We own the building.
Right.
Okay, so we have to extend.
We have a use agreement with them.
Use agreement. Use agreement. And how long is the current use agreement?
If it expires, I was coming up for the next one. They don't really.
Have you used.
Pay attention to it.
Can we amend that motion that we, like y'all did with some other things, give them 60 days? I mean, we talked about an offer, but until you get an offer, it's not an offer.
It's not an offer, it's just an agreement. Oh, you're talking about the buy.
Yeah. We keep hoping, but here it's being unused.
We've had two, just on the board, I know that two, Sam, what was the other group that looked at it?
Well, we've had, they've had other people, realtors also saying that they have other possibilities or other clients that we would have to advertise.
Most of the ones I have been.
What's advertised?
The least the building not buy.
And if it doesn't happen.
Boat company was interested in either or. But they haven't gotten back to me. I can call them again and see if they're still seriously interested.
Why don't we just advertise? And if we don't get any takers, then we'll just.
We've got an order authorizing that already.
Yeah, we have an.
COVID, yeah.
We'll just advertise it, and if we don't get any buyers, then give it to them.
We can, we have ready.
The difficulty about buyers is it requires the school district to do the same. You have to get them to.
They want to sell the entire corner.
If we sell it, they're going to get part of the money.
Right. And we need an inspection, which I know it probably won't pass, then we're going to need an appraisal. That's going to be another god knows how many weeks. Thank you. I personally would be happy to give it to him now. I've been here to talk about it for two years.
I agree. He's living, y'all need to go out there and see if his wall has fallen.
It's disgusting. I won't even step foot in there anymore.
We already had somebody fall through the ceiling one time.
It's empty for a while, it could be used. It's been sitting there empty for a while, it could be used.
And we pay more insurance for empty, that was interesting to learn.
So we have the insurance on.
So we have a motion and a second to approach the school board about extending the use agreement and proposing that buildings and grounds get it. After offering these people what we want to put, give them two weeks to make a decision.
How long has it been?
It's been a month.
In town, we need a word offer. Before our next meeting.
It's not obligated, obligated to offer them anything. They haven't approached us, so why would we bother to call them again?
I think we're.
That's lovely. Because we might make more money off of it. We might make more money off of it. We all have to split it, we just have to give whatever the land is worth, and then we get the bill.
That's going to be a pretty good.
But it should run pretty high. I'd like to just give them another two weeks to make a, to make a proposal.
Before our next meeting.
That deal will not work in two weeks. I can ask their interest in it, but I can tell you right now, their viewpoint of it is, when I explain that to them, the school district owns the land, and the county owns the building. And so that presents difficulties in them of how they negotiate it.
Well, it doesn't matter. If they don't give, if they don't come up with a, if they don't come up with a firm offer, then it's his. So it's a.
The building also has some maintenance on it, especially the office building.
They looked at it.
They can do that.
That's what they did.
That's what.
Okay. That's the motion.
Sell the land.
Be a good question.
That's what people are thinking about, so I don't think there's an issue besides using it.
They've been very amenable so far.
So the motion now is to extend the use agreement and let us know that we're planning on putting buildings and grounds there.
I would suggest that's what you do, and if somebody comes along and buys it, you could change those.
We can always relocate again. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item two, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission approving and supporting a Bucky's Travel Center to be located at or near the intersection of I-10 and Javonay, Firetail Road in Harrison County, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Labors, your own.
This is the letter you requested from M.D.O. Took us a little while to get it, but we got it, so that's what that is. Still have a long way to go, a lot of work to do, but this is the beginning step to allow employees to come and start construction. And it's going to take a coordinated effort with M.D.O. and county and a lot of other parties to pull this off.
Now, did they, did they? Sorry.
They said they'll help with the project, they just won't fund it, is basically what that letter says.
Mr. Martin, I had a long conversation with the Bucky's attorney last week. This is a matter of economic development, call for executive session, because of the nature of the ongoing negotiations with them. I think that part of it would be best discussed in executive session at the board's agreement.
But the resolution is basically just supporting their effort.
Yeah, the resolution is, I'm not talking about that for the second session, but I need to convey to y'all that Bucky's attorney was looking for the force of power across the community. That is part of that project, the negotiation, that I think would be best done in executive session.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
This letter too.
Pardon?
There would be improvements on this letter too.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to do the resolution supporting a Bucky's Travel Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item three, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission in authorizing and approving a purchase and sale agreement with 42 LLC for apartment 50 acres of real property within the Bay of Bernard Industrial Park for assorting and distribution facility. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we need him, Mr. Labors, for executive session. We can either call you, or if you can't, hang around.
I can hang around.
Okay, thank you. Item four, we need to just, he could not make it, so we'll skip it. Item consent agenda. Items numbered five through 11 have been placed on consent agenda, saying appearing to be routine non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 12, order approving county travel reimbursement for the tax assessor's office as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 13, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2020 real and personal property rolls as recommended by the tax assessor. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 14, order acknowledging receipt of the 2021 real and personal property assessment rolls for the first and second judicial districts of Harrison County, Mississippi, as presented by the tax assessor per section 273581 Mississippi Code of 1972. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 15, order accepting low quote of $38,418.9 from Floor Company LLC for material installation of flooring in the tax collector's office in the first judicial district courthouse to be paid out of account 001104922 and authorizing budget amendment thereof. Therefore, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 16, order accepting low quote of $19,082.98 from Amazon for computer-related equipment for the tax collector's office payable from account 001104928, transfer funds from the interface fees and authorizing budget amendment thereof.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 17, order approving payment of claims listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 18, order approving subdivision application for High Point subdivision located in section 21, Township 6, South, Range 11, West, Supervisors Voting District 5. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 19, order approving the subdivision application for Hatton Manor subdivision located in section 22 and 27, Township 6, South, Range 11, West, Supervisors Voting District 5, First Judicial District. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. This does have an in and out, is that correct, Jackie?
It does have.
They have both ways.
It does have two access points.
We have north one that has a one-way in, and if the lake ever blows, there'll be no way to help those people on the other side.
Correct. This, this one does have two access points, two full roads.
Okay, and there, I noticed on the exit there, the big tree, big oak tree, you know what they're going, how they're going to work around that, Mr. Niesel in here?
We're going to have an island around it.
I'm sorry.
It's going to be an island around it, trap on both sides.
Okay. All right. Good job. Thank you.
Claudine, would you pass Mr. Law on one of those written agendas, please?
And one more.
His computer correct?
One more question, while I've got time. The water, we've got that all worked out?
It's in process, we're doing it right now, and we won't move forward until it is.
Okay, because we have a big issue with drainage there.
It's all goes toward the way.
That's what they all say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 20, order approving a subdivision application for Crystal Lake, State District 2, located in section 12, Township 7, South, Range 12, West, Supervisors Voting District 2, as recommended by Jackie Turner. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Y'all want to bring some of these subdivisions to District 1, feel free. Come on. Right over there. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
National Guard won't let you.
Item 22, order approving the appointment of Deputy Chief Chris Williams to replace former Deputy Chief Chad Sims.
It's 21.
Sorry. 21. Order approving the final plaque for Sanctuary Trails, Subdivision Phase 1, located in section 25, Township 6, South, Range 10, West, Supervisors Voting District 5, again, as recommended by Jackie Turner. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye, same thing, Danny? There, if I may have a discussion. Is he here?
He just.
He just left.
It's not Danny.
It's not Danny, okay. The water?
Yes, they have the ponds in, we verified it, we worked through the outfall structures.
It's behind the school. Okay.
All those.
So, the last time I was in there, there were some issues with the drainage outfalls. So, they're all right?
We were there every day last week, making sure that's got resolved, and we feel comfortable with it.
Did you camera them?
Yes.
Okay, they're clear. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Well, okay, I got one or two fucking going.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 22, order approving the appointment of Deputy Chief Chris Williams to replace former Deputy Chief Chad Sims as the City of Passers Jam 9/11 Communications Commission Representative as recommended by the City of Passers Jam. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 23, order approving change order number one for price increase in the amount of $7,267 each. This is per to Sunbelt Fire Inc. for the installation of phone systems on the new E1 fire trucks and authorizing the board presidency execute the same. So just to be clear, the 7267 times 3 is what we're really looking at. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion.
Go ahead.
Why was that missed in the, from the beginning, Pat? If that's a critical aspect of this, how was that missed in the bids?
Yes, sir, it makes it up to 21,000 added to the price, but, but this is really important. When we first did it, when we first did it, we weren't putting the phone on there, but since then, we've started using the phone system, the encapsulating, the F-500. The F-500 is, helps us to put out a fire quickly, and it reduces our manpower need on that truck initially. So putting that system in there is absolutely important.
I'm not questioning the need for it, I'm simply asking whether.
Why was it missed?
Why was it left out of the specification, or was it?
Yes, sir, because we weren't using the F-500 when we, when we first designed the truck, and there wasn't the need for it at that particular time. But when we discovered what the F-500 did, we said, that's absolutely a no-brainer, we need to do that, and that's why we had to go back and do it. We thought we could do it without the change order, but they said, no, there's no way they could pipe it and plummet to do what we needed to do without doing this. That's why, yes, sir. So originally, it was not a need, and now it is a need to accomplish.
What's the total amount? I looked at it, but I don't know. What's the total amount of that, total bid? That we're paying for those? Total amount.
Yeah, of the, for all three trucks? Just remember that it was eight, some eight.
The total of all?
260 some thousand.
A piece, yeah, it's 800 something thousand.
Yes, sir, I don't have an exact figure, but see.
I just wanted to kind of get in my mind what percentage of the change order is to the total contract, so that's all.
Mis-skill, yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 24, order authorizing board president to execute lease agreement between Professional Building LLC in Harrison County for the property located at 711 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Unit 1, Buloxi Building, has been inspected and lease has been reviewed by the board committee. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Mr. Martin, can I advise the board on one thing on that contract? Remember, we had an issue about previous leases where there wasn't cancellation provision. In this one, inserted, the board has required to cancel the lease to 30 days notice. Lesser insisted on having that provision for them also, I think maybe 60 days. Anyway, just so the board knows, we, there's an option on both parties' part to cancel it within, I think it's 30 or 60 days. That was not in the original, that was sent out to everybody. Just so the county can all have that, if they decide it's not something needs. The lesser insisted on the same thing for itself.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I'm sorry, is it, is it capped at three years? I know the grant is three years, I'm just curious, or is it year by year?
What is it, one? Term of the grant, so I think it's two years.
The term of the grant, no, the grant is three years.
And I think part of authority, it goes through September 30 to 23. It was two and a half years, what's left on the.
I'm just making sure it's the amount of the grant, okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 25, discussed request from Judge Michael Dickens signed to use the former Harrison County Children's Shelter located at Maple Drive Campus for King Court's visitation center. Do we have a motion to discuss? Or do we want to take wisdom after we've told them? Do we have a motion and a second to table? Any further discussion?
Well, should, should I say what I was going to say about the trailer?
I believe so.
That's it. No, that's fine.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 26, order approving out of state trip through July 2021 as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
These are for seniors. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
We don't get to go.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Even though we're seniors, some of us.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 27, order adjudicating submission of application for funds requested by Senior Resource Agency in the amount of $456,872 for FY 2021-22 with SMPD agent, area agency on 14 to provide transportation senior center and NSIP for public and mail services in Harrison County from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 28, order authorizing Senior Resource Agency to enter into renewal negotiations with SMPD area agency on aging by submitting a letter of notification of provided adult daycare services in Harrison County from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 29, order taken off the table, I'm sorry.
Items 29 and 30 relate to an appeal that's going to come up at 10:30 this morning.
Oh, okay.
Item 36 on the agenda, there's only offices asking to remove that from the agenda. An appeal has been filed for that case, so it will come up at some future date. So we're, I'd ask that the board concur with the recommendations of the planning commission for items 31 through 38, except for number 36.
Just number, this is District 5, when they move in a mobile home, does anyone inspect the mobile home to make sure that it's safe? I mean, I know we have zoning that inspects all houses, but what concerns me is the age of a mobile home and whether or not it's safe for the person that's delivering it.
Some would not do that, but I'm not even aware that the code office inspects for its safety, so.
Might need to.
We don't do that for regular houses.
Could you check into that and see if they do, please, so that we can, or can the board or somebody check into it, make sure that there's some type of inspection?
And he said we don't do it for houses either.
No, there's an inspection for the electrical connection.
Electrical.
And a plumbing connection, but we do not inspect every house or any manufactured home for.
Do you expect them for plumbing and electrical?
Yeah. Do you, do you do the same inspection for a mobile home for plumbing and electric? I know you do for electrical, but for the plumbing?
Yeah, they have to, each house has to connect to a legal subject system, so.
Gas and all that that is involved.
There's not that much gas service in the unincorporated county that I'm aware of.
No, not, in the mobile home, you have butane, and I have butane too. I mean, houses have butane.
I've never heard of that discussed.
So we have a.
We'll just ask about it. Maybe we'll ask about it soon.
The state fire marshal instructs the foundation underneath manufactured homes, but just to make sure it's manned instead of full of water.
And I know, I'm not trying to say you can't afford it, but there's, there's certain safety. When people bring in a mobile home, sometimes they're not, you know, sa- safe. They don't look safe. I don't, maybe they are, I don't.
The main inspection is whether or not it's a zone to wind code determined by the federal government. So there's either a wind zone one, two, or three. Two is legal in the six coastal counties in Mississippi. So that's the, the first thing we look at.
And then wiring and plumbing. Okay. That's pretty close then. The most trippy more can go wrong.
So do we have a motion to concur with the planning commission's recommendations on items thirty-one through thirty-eight with the exception of thirty-six?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine, order approving payment of claims as listed to be paid from a tour account. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussions? Sorry. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty, order spreading upon minutes the personnel changes for sheriff's offices listed on file with payroll card. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
There's another coney line?
Connor.
Connor. Oh.
Do we have a second? I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-one, order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed and is on file with payroll card. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two, order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and on file with payroll card. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-three, order concurring with the intervention court on personnel changes listed and on file with payroll card. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four, order designating the purchase clerk, chancellor clerk, county engineer, department head, and any supervisor as needed as the board representatives to receive bids and RFPs as listed below.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Let's recognize the sheriff as he reports on how many guests he hosted over the weekend.
Uh, Colonel, we had six hundred twelve, fifty misdemeanors, hundred twenty-one females, thirty-six that have cleared state arrest, and twenty-four federal inmates.
Thank you. And the sheriff, I'll go ahead and read this now, I'm sorry, but this is kind of last minute. We just need to, an order to spread on the minutes. In accordance with MS House Bill four five three twenty twenty-one, regular session, I'm requesting that attached documents Harrison County Sheriff's deputies off-duty employment roster and HB four five three be recognized on the board of supervisors' minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of July sixth twenty twenty-one at the Gulfport POS meeting room. As always, thank you in advance, fourteen percent sheriff. So just a roster of the time that they worked. So do we have a motion to spread on the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Not the bill that allows the policeman to go work private, um?
No, it's a bill that allows them to use their, their vehicle to travel to and from that, that second job.
And in uniform and with guns and all that?
Everything that they have.
What is the liability that goes with that?
Well, currently, what, what we're doing is, is the, whoever the company is that is employing them, so the employer would put them on their insurance, only the vehicle. So if they're working, if they're working in off-duty detail and they're not using their vehicle, then they don't, based on what the House bill says, they do not have to be placed on their insurance policy. If they're using a car, they have to be placed on their insurance policy.
But if, if anyone that was working for the sheriff's department had a second job and they were in uniform with all the, you know, with our weapons and with the safety vests, and even in the car, and there was, or even without the car, and there was an accident, would we be liable? Would the county be liable?
I think the county's liable for no matter what they do on anything, but, but it's.
Not at a second job. This is a second job where you're there.
Well, you have to read the House bill, but yet it, it falls back on the employer. But there are so many, there's so many different things that, and Tim can probably explain it better than I can. If you're traveling to and from, and you're in your scope of duty, then you're still protected. But it's, if you want to follow it up in there.
He's in the course of his law enforcement duties that he is exempt under the tour claim act of the county. He's not liable for that unless it's a nineteen eighty-three situation with a difference of rights violation. And that has a, just along with that, too, but we don't give that. The area that's gonna be different is if he's at a private facility and being paid by that private employer, then you're gonna get a mixture when he's not in the course. So if he bumped into somebody and knocked him down in an accident, that employer's gonna be liable. The sheriff's department's not gonna be liable to not act in this law enforcement scope.
So if he was a bouncer in a bar, let's just say, and somebody gets in a fight and he?
Breaks it up.
Breaks it up, which, by getting in the middle of it, then with the.
And makes an arrest.
This is where this will get, well, depends on what they're gonna argue, because if he's now deciding to make an arrest.
Right.
Then it jumps into law enforcement as opposed to private. Both of us would probably get sued, but the likelihood that he was making an arrest and some, some, and somebody accounted it to be law enforcement exemption, because he now crossed back into law enforcement duties. If he was doing it privately, the private employer, I can tell you, most people that file claims are gonna go towards the private employer because they don't have the immunities, they don't have the exemptions, they don't have the cap.
I'm not against them having a second job. I'm just concerned about the liability of being in uniform and being in a county.
This is a state statute now. It's not, not really, you know, it's, this is, this is the law, so they can, if they want to do it, they can.
It's, it's not something to have a choice in. But, but ultimately, I don't think it's gonna be a big liability exposure, because either the employer's gonna be liable, or the county's liable, it's gonna fall under the exemption. It has to be law enforcement duties. I'm sure the employers are gonna be claiming he was doing law enforcement, therefore, we're gonna be saying he's exempt. Everybody else is gonna be saying, no, he was doing.
Another thing that they're doing is, that is not law enforcement, the hospital, the Colosseum, the Edward Mall, I mean, everything is.
The county's not paying them, so that's where the line is fuzzy. That's all I'm saying.
It'll be fuzzy, but I don't think it's something to worry a lot about.
Okay.
We may see some claims. If you do, then they'll have to make decisions about what to do on it, but.
I have one more thing. Sheriff, sheriff.
Okay.
I have one more thing. I know we got a second screen break coming up, August twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Start over again.
I said, no, we have a second screen break coming up, August twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And I'm just checking to see if, from a resourceful standpoint, this is part two, I'm back in April, from a resourceful standpoint, you're in pretty good shape.
I think so. I don't think, you know, I think that April, because of the, I said, because of the vendors, the people that were supporting it and trying to put it on, I think that they, they failed in, in April. But I think by August, they'll have their, their stuff together and do it, do it right or halfway right.
Big concert.
So I think it's gonna be, yeah, I think there's gonna be a lot more people here than there was in April, but we're, we're.
In good shape. Okay.
I'm sorry, can we go ahead and vote on this, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion in a second? Spread on the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, sorry.
Well, can they, those people hire some of these people that are gonna be available that work in the sheriff's department?
We'll be working.
They will be in.
We'll be working as the sheriff's. Yeah, we'll be working as sheriff's officers. So now they can't hire our part-time security.
Is there gonna be some part-time security?
I have no idea.
You know, like, I think, does Cruising the Coast have, they have, they hire security?
But I think this group here is pretty much combined at grounds of the Colosseum with the big concerts, and so this is.
It's getting, it's getting free-lancing.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
But I think this group is more organized.
Put on their little hot dogs stand or something.
Well, then they gotta get appropriated, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Item forty-six, order approving payment of following invoices to Rashada Batana for professional engineering services to Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred payable from oh three two two oh one five eight one and authorizing an inter fund loan until grant reimbursement is received. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven, order approving payments as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-eight, order adjudicating signature by the board president for Mississippi Development Authority GovCo's restoration fund request for cash for services dated March one twenty twenty-one through May twelve twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine, order authorizing disposal of inactive records listed which are eligible for disposal in accordance with retention schedules previously approved by local government records committee and adopted by the board of supervisors. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, order acknowledging MOU between Public Safety Cadets and Harrison County Mississippi Sheriff's Office regarding a program to educate mentor youth and authorizing board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one, order approving sole source purchase of Taser cartridges and battery packs from AXON Enterprises at a cost of fourteen thousand seven eighty-six fifty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, order rescinding agenda item number forty-eight of February first twenty twenty-one meeting declaring asset one seven nine eight three type mobile home twenty-eight by sixty-six as surplus and authorizing sheriff to advertise with sale of the same. This is a duplicate order of agenda item number thirty-six of June fourteenth twenty twenty-one agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, order approving the sole source purchase of a blue disc publisher with all software and print capabilities from TCS worth a cost of six thousand eight seventy-six forty-seven. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Where's this going? Robbie?
What's up?
Number fifty-three. Who's this for? Oh, it's you. Okay. Okay. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four, discuss funding of sheriff's mental health transport division. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Y'all wanna discuss?
Well, I think.
I missed that last meeting, so.
I think discussion is pretty mature, because first, we gotta determine whether we and what the contracts involve with the private hospitals. So if we have the private hospitals.
Yeah.
And they're taking those patients, then maybe we won't need them.
And I'd also like.
Well, they gotta get there somehow. That's, that's, that's the issue. They've gotta get to the hospital somehow.
Well, are we talking about you having to transfer?
You gotta take them from the hospital.
Every single one of them. Yeah, every single one of them. If they, how it, how it works right now is, is if, if a judge issues a writ through John's office, they issue a writ, then we go out and pick that person up. So we take that person from their home to the hospital, Memorial or wherever, whoever's taking them. Then whenever CSU says we're ready for them, we go back to CSU, pick them up, take them back to, from the hospital to CSU. So we've got, we've got moving parts going every different direction. Now they're opening up to where the, the region is talking about moving people from here to Laurel, or here to Patsburg, or here to somewhere else. If that starts happening, we don't have the manpower to do that.
I thought what I, what we were trying to do is contract with the hospitals, but those beds in excess of the CSU, the CSU here in Harrison County.
For transportation.
Is not available. If beds are not available, then we would have a contract with one of the hospitals to take those.
Hospital won't take them anywhere. It's all unless.
No, no, I'm talking about accepting for services, not transportation. But I'm, I don't quite understand what, how you transporting them now, Sheriff? Do you have somebody of time for that?
We've got my transport division, which is made up of court ballots, it's made up of security in the courthouse, and it's made up of transport, they're transporting back and forth to the jail every day for court and different services, medical, any doctor's appointments, that's what they do. So the mental, the mental health is opening up into a different level to where they're wanting to move people with the different hospitals. You know, the only one we ever used was Memorial. So now we've got three hospitals we're using. Plus, they want, they're, they're saying now that they want to move people in order to empty the CSU here if they can move them to Laurel for treatment, or they can move them to somewhere else. So in order to get them there, we have to take them there. There is no mode of transportation other than this.
My point is, if we have the contract with the hospitals here, what would be the necessity of moving them to Laurel or DeSoto County or anything? You see, I thought we discussed the transport, because we're talking about a lot of money. I thought we discussed giving you additional funds for a transport because we thought we might have to transport them. CSU, you're right, that the present one's transporting them to Laurel or to whatever part of the state that they were having to transport them. I thought with the contracts that we were negotiating with the private hospitals, that would eliminate that far transportation that, I thought that's what we were talking about. That's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry.
There's two, there's two, like, two statutes that we're dealing with. The first one is the pre-evaluation commitments, where somebody comes in and files an affidavit saying this person needs to be committed. The judge reviews it, and they decide, yes, this person needs to be evaluated as to whether or not they need to be committed. They go out and the judge issues a writ, they go pick this person up, bring them to wherever. If CSU has a bed, that's the point of first entry. If they don't have a bed, then right now they've been taken to Memorial. The contract would allow, if CSU does not have a bed, it would allow one of these private facilities to treat the person or do the pre-evaluation, which is now gonna go back to the court and say, this person needs to be committed, this person doesn't need to be committed. They have to be committed, and the next step is, where do they go for commitment? So if there's a bed available in the state, the state has to take them, or the CSU has to take them, one of the two. If there's not a bed available, then the court has authority to enter an order to send them to a private facility and order the county of residents to pay. That's the two statutes we're dealing with right now in the treaty.
Ma'am, there's something that's come to light after this was put on the agenda. The State Department of Health wants to.
Right.
Meet with us sometime in May, so we might wanna hold up.
In July.
Excuse me.
July.
Twentieth.
So can we just maybe table this until after that meeting? Because I think they're gonna shed some light on this.
And we have, we drafted the contract, and I sent it out to those that, comment on it. I hadn't heard back from it since Friday, so I expect we'll get back. But we don't have to do anything to overturn that, just so the board is aware, if, if the judge enters an order, that we, we, we have to pay, the county has to pay the bill, but the county of residents has to pay the bill, whatever that bill is.
I think we, we know that.
Yes.
That's part of negotiations with the private hospitals, what we gonna pay them?
Yeah, right now, we don't have a contract, so it would be whatever that bill is for, and then the court would have to, the court would be able to deal with that bill, because it's gonna go back to the court, and the court's gonna have to order the county to pay it. So at least the court would have the ability to say, no, that bill's too high, you know, some, some ability of justice. So anyway, that's the status.
I guess what I, I guess the point that, Sheriff, I apologize if I misunderstood,
but I thought the problem that we were gonna have is if we couldn't negotiate with private hospitals, then the patent bill was gonna have to send them somewhere else. And when we start talking about sending them to Laurel, or to Natchez, or to wherever they send them, that's where the problem comes in with Sheriff, because he has to transport them, and that we, he didn't have.
Well, it's not, it's not only that.
But as long as it was local, I didn't, I didn't think there was a.
You are correct, but.
A special need for.
Difference with that is, is the local, all the local, we're transporting as well. So if, if you have one person that's committed, let's just say they got a writ, we pick them up, they're committed, that's at least, at least four different transport times we're dealing with that one person. At least four.
I understand that. So what you're saying is, you need this additional help, even if we have the con, the hospitals contracted.
Well, yes. The issue, the issue is, is, I know, if you gotta meet with Department of Mental Health in July, that's fine. But unless they come up with their own transport division, we're gonna be talking about the same thing in July.
Okay.
There is no difference there.
Supervisor Rocko is patiently waiting.
Uh, one thing to keep in mind before we, I think it would be good for us to look at the contract that we already have with AMR or advertising for people to pick it up that are, I mean, I know transfers, they are trained already, they have the facilities, they, am I right in that, Julia, that you have the transport?
They do, but they've got to completely sanitize every time they use an ambulance, correct?
Yes, we do.
So if you're talking a few hours for transports, I suppose.
No, we used to have transport days. Do they have, still have transport days where all you do all day long is transport?
No, we, we do them as they co, as they come in each day. Now, we, we are transporting psychiatric patients now. If the emergency departments call us, you know, they've been admitted. I mean, we've gone as far as Olive Branch, Mississippi, to take people. So we're taking people all over the state, you know, right now.
Is there any division or any company whatsoever that does nothing but transport patients?
I think that's a question.
From nurse, say, say someone's going from the hospital to a nursing home, whether they're mentally, you know, do they have mental issues or not?
Yeah.
Do you do, does any, does any company do that? Or you do that?
We do those. We do those. If they, if they need a stretcher, then we do that. We do have the secure vehicles that we work with the sheriff on. Y'all may remember that a few years back, we got the secure vehicles. But those are for in, for voluntary people. Those are not people involuntary, like what you're talking about. Right now, the involuntary right now go buy an ambulance if they need to go.
I just want to make sure what, if it costs less or more for you.
Y'all have to, if, if the board wants to contract out for all mental health transport, I am a hundred percent for that.
Way off.
You can say it on three hundred thousand dollars, but you're gonna pay more in the long run.
I was just trying to.
But I am a hundred percent for that.
Well, we're gonna have this meeting.
Just trying to look at all options. Just trying to look at all options, you know.
Save those-
Better for you and for the county.
Save those questions for that special meeting. It will be only with the board supervisors. Okay, number fifty-five. Order approving maligre reimbursement for in-county travel for the following employees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six. Order declaring various items as junk as per the attached list from Hales County Tax Assistant's Office and authorizing said department to dispose of these assets.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, order declaring the following items as junk, authorizing to sell as scrap and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
So any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight. Order declaring the following items as surplus, approving the donation of same to MMRT North Division, Louds County Coroner and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from the inventory list.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Do we need any type of inter-local or mutual aid or any of that for that ten?
Not necessarily. Well, you can donate to another girl, no one to do. I don't see anything that says they want it. I mean, that's the problem, there's just a list there, but do we need to get something from them saying they're, they needed one? I, I would say table it, let's get something that says-
That's more clear.
They requested it.
Okay.
Somebody's-
We'll entertain a motion to table. Do we have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine. Order authorizing disposal of assets for attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty. Order approving closure of travel card issued to Dorinda Sykes for employee travel arrangements and authorizing the county administrator to execute the document for the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion. I would just like to thank Dorinda for her dedicated service to this county for such a long time. She's an excellent employee and she is sorely, sorely missed.
Amen. Amen. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-one. Order approving adding Robert Ambreno, EMA Deputy Director to the Take Home Vehicle List. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Wait a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-two. Order rescinding previous order of June seventh agenda item number seventy. Approving transfer of seven five hundred from escrow account oh oh two nine oh oh nine five oh into the road fund account one five oh 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 three eight seven, authorizing budget amendment to one five oh three oh oh four three oh. The transfer was not needed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-three. Order acknowledging receipt of May twenty twenty-one procurement travel card detail as follows. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-four. Order authorizing the following interfund loans and repayments per the attached schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-five. Order authorizing the transfer in the amount of five thousand three fifty-eight forty-six from general fund oh oh one nine oh oh nine five oh to the two percent unemployment comp revolving fund one zero seven zero 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 three eight seven to bring the cash balance to, to the required cash balance from reciprocating. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-six. Order authorizing reimbursement to the general fund in an amount of one twenty-eight twenty-eight payable from the fire services fund for work performed on the following vehicles. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-seven. Discuss the emergency funding financing proposals as submitted by financial institution.
Good morning. So we got four proposals in.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry. We got four proposals in for the emergency funding and the lowest one was community bank at point seven eight percent. And this is going to reimburse the general fund until we get FEMA reimbursement.
So what's your recommendation or do you have one?
That is the recommendation today with the lowest rate.
Motion except the lowest.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-eight. Order authorizing payment of claims-
I'm sorry, we do have to adopt the resolution to go with that, that Mr. Pittman sent?
Yes.
John, do you have that resolution?
Yes, I have a copy of it and I could give it to Brittany. Is that the one? We need to make a motion to see it though and adopt it.
When did you get this, General?
I didn't get it till Friday. I think she got it.
I believe that one I received Thursday afternoon. And I think he also sent it to Tim.
So we need a motion to adopt?
You don't see any problem? Motion except the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second, you spread it.
Any further discussion? We'll spread on the minutes. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item, we got time to do a couple more. Item sixty-eight. Order authorizing payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-nine. Order authorizing disposal records, list at which are eligible for disposal in accordance with the retention schedules previously approved by local government record committee and adopted by board supervisors. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy. Order authorizing issuance of duplicate warrants as listed per certificates and affidavits filed with the chancellor clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-one. Order approving payment of pine belt mental health care resources employees number twenty twenty-one oh seven in amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for monthly county contributions. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-two. Order approving the waiver of rental fees for the East West Air and Civic Center by Long Beach School District to host its district-wide return to school staff development program on August three and four, twenty twenty-one. Can we motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Is it advertising county resources? Motion second.
No, this is-
This is waiving of rental fees.
This is waiving of rental fees for the facility.
So we have a motion and a second. Over discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We'll do one more. Item seventy-three. Order authorizing the acquisition of certain property and declaring private property within the area served by Harrison County to be necessary for public use. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We will now, we have a ten-thirty hearing. Mr. Buck, will you go over the rules for us?
We'll be limited to three speakers from each side. Each speaker will have no more than ten minutes to speak. And we will start with the appellant and then the opposition. And then we'll have a debate of only five minutes at the very end.
I mean, we had, we need a motion to take off the table.
Yeah, hold on, I'm going back to it.
Motion.
So it's item, what's the number? Twenty.
What's the number?
Thank you. Twenty-nine. Hold on. Okay, so item twenty-nine. Order taken off the table. Appeal filed by Malcolm Jones of Planning Commission's denial of zoning map amendment request due to split two-two vote for case file two one zero five eight C one oh four. Do we have a motion to take off the table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. The appeal filed by Malcolm Jones of Planning Commission's denial of zoning map amendment request due to split two-two vote requested by Flutie Mountain Associates for Dairy Hill Investments. Now we will have the hearing.
So Malcolm is not here today, but Mr. Stock is here to present on his side. When we tabled this last time, I want to make clear that this is strictly a rezoning. There is not a subdivision layout attached to this. Everybody recognizes that if it's rezoned, a new layout will be presented to the planning commission for a conditional use permit or something. This is a property that has Bayou Bernard running through it, so it's got an actual creek and flood zones on it with wetlands also. So the discussion last time was whether or not the property needed to be rezoned in order for it to qualify for mitigation credits or something to that effect.
What number are we on, I apologize?
Number thirty.
Thirty.
So Ms. Wiggins, will you be our timekeeper? We'll start with the appellant. And you can have three speakers, ten minutes each, or you can use the other thirty minutes yourself.
All right. Being stopped four four nine Wetherby, Greenville, Mississippi. I'm here today simply to get this property rezoned from A one to R one. I think, do you, do they have the report Donovan scrawled in? They've been reviewing that. It pretty much states in the report Donovan that, you know, everything around this property or most of the things have either been developed or are being developed or zoned R one. All I'm asking today, and I'll be short and sweet, is to zone this from A one to R one. And then if I decide to come back later for the conditional use, we can look at that in a future day. So I'm short and sweet. I think Malcolm said a lot and everybody's talked about this in the last meeting, so. If anybody has anything, that's about all I got, so.
Well, you'll have time to rebut later, so we'll go back and-
Okay.
I'll decide. Mr. Simpson. Five minutes.
Good morning, Stephen Simpson, nine zero zero four, Victoria, South Coast, Newport, Mississippi, three nine five oh three. On behalf of the objectors. Likewise, I'm not going to re-stink everything that was said in the last meeting, which was, which was fairly lengthy regarding this application, but because the record in this matter needs to be clear in case of appeals, which you guys are quite familiar with, I do want to make a few points. The, the application to amend the zoning map of this hundred and fifty acre plus or minus parcel and at that time and for conditional use permit was filed to change the parcel from A one to R one and a two hundred and forty-six lot subdivision. That was filed April sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. A public hearing was held before the Harrison County Planning Commission, at which time the conditional use permit application was withdrawn. That's not before, was not before the Planning Commission, was not before this board last time. At the public hearing, objectors appeared, as did the applicant. The Planning Commission denied the application to rezon from A one to R one. On May twenty-first, the same next day, the applicant appealed to this board, who considered the appeal on June the fourteenth of this year. It was that meeting that you tabled, it took no action and set it for today. It is important for the record purposes, this, Mr. Holloman will tell you guys that at the board meeting on May twenty, or excuse me, on June fourteenth, was the first time the word conservation easement ever appeared in the record. At the Planning Commission, the, the notion of turning this parcel into a conservation easement had never been brought up, had never been suggested. It was heard for the first time by the objectors here on June fourteenth. The reason that it's important is because that's the reason why your ordinance requires a public hearing for public hearing and objectors like my clients and like Mr. Williams' clients to come in and state their opinions about the application. Well, the application for the Planning Commission and what was noticed for public hearing was a zoning change in a conditional use. And the applicant had the right and did withdraw the conditional use. But what was heard was a zoning change. So on appeal, what came to you was supposed to be the Planning Commission's denial of zoning change and we got off onto a tangent about, for the first time, the existence or creation of a conservation easement. I snubbed it on appeal before y'all. But, but I ran down that rabbit trail later on, I realized, like everybody else did. And the discussion did indeed turn on whether or not a zoning change was required. And it was either a misinterpretation, misinterpretation of the law or, or a misunderstanding. I acknowledge that I didn't know, Mr. Jones' representative, it was required to change it from A one to R one in order to get the conservation easement. We all know today that's not true, or at least it's inaccurate. It, it is not required. There's tons of conservation easements. And you can look at the Mississippi Conservation Easement statute. It doesn't require it at all. Doesn't even need Planning Commission approval or this board's approval. Mr. Stock can go make that a conservation easement today. It can be in perpetuity with a government agency, with a non-government agency. He can do that today. Doesn't need any planning commission, doesn't need board approval. The reason we were here, and I said it last time and I'm going to say it again, is because there's a tax benefit. There's a huge federal IRS tax benefit to the landowner to make him a conservation easement. One of the things that a conservation easement does require is an appraisal. You don't have to be a land developer to understand that appraisal of a hundred and fifty track that's, that zone R one is a heck of a lot more valuable than A one. Now, I don't think it's within this board's scope of authority and much less your mission statement to rezone property for the sole purpose of financially benefiting a single landowner. That's just wrong, y'all. It's, it's not what y'all do. And it's certainly not what the land use ordinance contemplates the Planning Commission nor appeals to this board. It is for the use of the property and whether, as was appealed, the character and change of the neighborhood, there's been a change in the character of the neighborhood and whether there's a public need and whether the use would be contiguous and contemporaneous with the other surrounding neighborhoods. It won't, obviously. There's a Bayou running through the entire track, Bayou Bernard running right through the middle of the entire track. The record has, the chart stuff provided to you, that shows almost the entire parcel is in the flood plain in the county's flood zone. Malcolm acknowledged that the homes would have to be elevated. This is not contiguous with the neighborhoods around it, with Peyton Place, with those other neighborhoods. It'd be a completely development if they ever decided to do it. If he wants to do a conservation easement in perpetuity, he can do that. He doesn't need this board's permission and he certainly doesn't need to be rezoned. The issue before the board today is the appeal from the Planning Commission, which was a zoning issue only. Planning Commission determined it was not proper to be rezoned. And, and I think it is beyond the scope of this board and certainly abuse of its power, given the record, to, to rezon it from A one to R one for the purposes that have been stated. The record's pretty clear on that. Questions?
Are there any?
I have a question for Patrick. Patrick, has the zoning, have we ever did this, changed the zoning request without a corresponding reason such as a conditional use permit? Have we ever changed the zoning without, for just changing the zoning, without a plan or a conditional use permit?
I believe we have, but for-
And what was it for?
You know, there's maybe been a thousand zoning changes since we started twenty years ago. I can't think of one now, but a lot of applicants in the last couple of years have been asking us to separate the rezoning from the conditional use permit. But the great majority of our cases are rezoned for a specific purpose, and I think it's important for the public to know what that specific purpose is.
Well, that's important.
For convenience, we lumped them together. But in this case, I believe everyone acknowledged that two hundred and forty-six lots was an extraordinary number of lots on this land that did not have the mitigation, the wetlands mitigation map, not mitigation map, wetlands delineation map attached to it. So there was a belief that the majority of the property was wetlands. Their wetlands consultant said that's not the case, but they never provided a map to show which lands were not wetlands.
But all the property around there is zoned out?
Mostly R1. There are subdivisions on Orange Grove Road to the north, subdivisions on Lincoln Road to the south.
But you will remember, Supervisor Martin, that the elevation difference in those subdivisions and Bayou Bernard is significantly different. Most of those are forty feet and above, where most of the property around here is thirty to twenty-five feet and below. Significant difference. Supervisor Powers asked the question last time. Isn't that what the objectors want? Something in perpetuity which assures there's not going to be development there. It's absolutely what we want. It shouldn't be that difficult to give it to us in writing. But the landowner can't give it to us in writing, can't give it to anyone in writing, because then that monkey's with, is the word I'm going to use, his bill to go to IRS and say, this is R1 property, and, but I'm never going to develop it. It's R1, so it's worth this much money, but here's a document writing where I promised I'm never going to develop it. And guess what, y'all? It's not R1. It's not worth what the tax benefit he's asking for. That's what this is about. Don't let anybody tell you different. And that's outside this board's scope. Thank you.
How much time's left, Renee?
He uses five minutes.
It's ten each. They got a total of thirty.
Ten minutes, then three minutes, forty seconds.
So is there anyone else who would like to speak? And then you... State your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Dan Burton, one one four five four Coleman Road. I'm the adjacent forty point six acres that's next to Mr. Stock's property. Real quick, I was under the impression that we had one bite at the apple related to the change in the zoning, as well as the conditional use. I came in pretty strong on objecting originally, because I didn't want to get trapped in a situation where this board approved a zoning change, and I had no opportunity to object to it in the future if I felt it was going to damage my property. We already have a lot of water issues on Coleman Road in that area because of the bayou. I think there's some things that could, can be done to fix that, but I didn't want to add on top of that. I would basically say that, I've actually met with Mr. Stock about it, and Mr. Box about the situation also, and also my neighbors that are around me. I would say that, you know, I'm going to change my position on this from a standpoint. I would ask that a change in zoning would probably be okay, as long as we had an opportunity to come back with conditional use and object to it at an appropriate time in the future if there was something that was not going to be in the best benefit of the county or the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson, do you have any other speakers?
Yes.
Just state your name and address.
Chris Fox, seventeen two fourteen, Orange Grove Road, Development, Port, Carolina. My property is, adjoins this property, and I have a thirty-five-year business there. We do a lot of industrial work out there, but not to mention that point, that it joins this piece of property, and we flood terribly bad, three, four feet of water in our office. But basically, the road has been shut down four times in the last thirty days, and we're trafficking to go through there. It's absolute, right in front of this property, since it did there, and water floods. We don't need to consider now, five or ten years from now, putting a neighborhood in there. And I'm afraid if they approve what they're asking for this rezoning, that a lot of these folks may not be in here the next time it comes, and then next thing we got elevated homes in there, and they literally fish out their porches. So I ask the board to consider it strongly. We employ a couple hundred people, so we do put a lot of money into Harris County, Jackson County here, so we would appreciate y'all's help. Thank you.
Are there any? Well, that's your three speakers. So we'll go back. Pat, what's our next step? Rebuttal by the person making the appeal.
I'll need to repeat the name again.
Mr. Stock.
You're a regular.
Hi. I listened to Mr. Simpson talk about the conservation easement. That would be one of my choices. Another choice would be to come back for a conditional use. I'm trying to get this rezoned from A1 to R1, because all the property around me is zoned R1, and I'm trying to do it on its own merit, not based upon a conservation easement. So I would like y'all to hear that and think about that. May I ask one question?
Sure.
Why, why won't you submit your conditional use request along with your change of a zoning request?
I'm trying to finish up, to get the wetlands report done, and then I'll come back with the conditional use at some point, potentially.
Well, why don't you get the wetlands done before you even ask for the zoning change?
That may take a little time and cost a little money, and I would like to get it rezoned first before I go spend all that money trying to do the wetlands. Simple, but...
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, what's the board's procedure?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of Beanstalk man into R zoning, R1 zoning.
We have a motion to approve the zoning change from A1 to R1. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, where did we end off? Number seventy-four.
Before we go to that, I just want to look forward to where that lease that's written of, the one that's attached to the agenda, is not the revised lease, is the first lease that didn't get the change of that.
For the MLK property?
Yes. The lease, the final version had a provision that both sides had the right to terminate upon a certain amount of time. The one that's attached to the agenda, I noticed, did not have that provision, so...
And Mallory did send me that Friday, but she mentioned that it was not the one with the revision.
So do we need to move in the motion there?
No, no, I think it's fine. I just, we'll spread on the minutes, but I just want the board to know, you know, when you look at it, there are provisions to change. We'll get it straightened out.
Got you. Okay, we're at number seventy-four. Orders denied in the claim of James and Sonia Seals seeking damages resulting from automobile accident. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-five. Order adjudicating the employment of Tim Holloman and Boyce Holloman Associates to represent Harrison County in a litigation matter filed by James and/or Sonia Seals. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-six. Order adjudicating the employment of Board Attorney to represent Harrison County in litigation matter of Warren Paving versus Harrison County, Mississippi. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second discussion. And it's appropriate to tell us exactly what this is, why, what they're challenging.
This is the, that's a good question. This is the award, the bid for asphalt, where they were one penny high on one part of it and twenty-five cents high on the other part. I don't think it's a valid appeal, Warren Paving, that's contending that Mr. Parker, what's his name in his business?
Landshapers.
That Landshapers does not have the testing to comply with the state aid road projects, because the state aid road project requires certain, to meet certain testing for its asphalt. And they, they're contending he does not have that.
That is in case, the fact, then, that they're not meeting specifications, if in fact that is.
The specifications don't, it's a little bit weirdly written, because it doesn't really require it as part of the specs. What it says is, when you pave, which is later, you shall comply with those testing. So you theoretically can get the bid, as long as when you're paving, your testing complies with the state aid road.
That makes sense.
It's, the way it's written, but there is a, in the appeal, and I don't know the answer yet, Warren Paving's...
As far as I'm concerned, then, the specs need, if we're using those specs, they need to be changed.
Correct.
Correct.
Those specs need to be changed to say that you can meet that criteria.
I agree.
Correct.
Well, just so the board understands, and I don't know the answer to this question, but Warren Paving's bid, I mean, their appeal, they say that at the time of the specifications, Landshapers didn't comply, but on April the twenty-first, I mean, sometime in April, they apparently did comply. They're using the previous bid for the county, so I don't know if they're complying currently or not. What he's saying it really is, at the time they submitted their bid, they did not have the testing in place to comply. The way the bid is written, complying with the state aid is at the time you're paving, which makes sense, because you want them to be, at the time they're paving, is when you want them to be able to comply with the testing, not pre-bid. If they only had to qualify pre-bid, then you wouldn't know what it was at the time they paved it. It's not the best written in the world, it probably could be made clearer, but, I mean, I don't think much of their appeal at the moment. Now, we did have discussions about the quality of work. You have two bidders, and that's a little bit of a, you know, you only got two, and they're a penny apart, on one part of it, and twenty-five cents apart on another part of it. You know, the lowest and best bidder enters the picture when it's that close. I don't know the answer to that. The board approved Landshapers as the low bidder in that case, and simply warrants saying they are low bid, but they're not the lowest and best bidder, we're better.
I understand the technicality you're talking about, but the bottom line is, when the asphalt is laid on the road, is it meeting that specification?
That's correct.
And I think it's incumbent upon us to see that it is, since that type of pair of money being placed on there.
And I think that's, Tim has asked for testing. Don't, do we approve somebody to test it on our home? So that's going to happen. That's my opinion.
But either way, this court has been filed.
It's been filed, and the appeal is just, it's kind of strangely written, because it implies that as of April of twenty twenty-one, Landshapers isn't compliant. At the time of the bid, they're contending they were not in compliance, but to me, the way the bid's written, you're not looking at the time of the bid, you're looking at the time of the paving takes place. So I hadn't gotten fully into it yet, I'm waiting on records from the purchasing to see if I'm correct, but I did have a long conversation with Tim Smith about it to figure out what was going on.
We do have, we fixing to have the testing in place, isn't it?
Yes, and I think they're wrong when they're saying that the testing must have, you must have tested at the time of the bid.
Okay, I'm sorry.
He must comply at the time he's paving, no question about that, Malcolm.
That's what the court's going to decide.
But then, Tim, it's too late.
Well...
And a fact, it...
No, no, because you're testing before.
That it's incumbent upon us, which we're having to do, to go out and test it at the time.
Before it's put in.
Before it's put in.
Right. They have to comply, the apparently state aid test them, and then the county's now got its own testing. The testing's not taking place after the lay is taking place at the plant.
Before it's laid.
It should be.
Tim?
Through the state, the state comes in and does inspections on their plants, make sure their plants are operating correctly, I think. Make sure their feeders, everything, down through the asphalt's lay, you know, when they're mixing their asphalt at the plant, they're supposed to have a lab at their plant that's testing their runs of their asphalt. You know, on our end, when it's laid, we should test to make sure we get dentsies, mixes, all match up to what their lab sheets are saying as well.
Those runs are made probably daily, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, if the state is coming in and checking every four months, that doesn't make sense.
Let's see, that's why I wanted to get our own testing firm, because who's to say every batch is consistent?
That's right.
That's...
So it's kind of incumbent upon us to check every time they lay asphalt, that it's, whoever the person is, or company is, that they meet that criteria.
Exactly.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-seven. Order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-six, twenty nineteen, on parcel number zero seven one one K, zero four zero eight seven, oh oh six, for twenty eighteen taxes, Azironeas and Mesfoid Abinicio. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion?
There's an error in the assessment about the taxes that's involved, and they request it to be set aside, because they made the error.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-eight. Order adjudicating the tax sale of August thirty-one, twenty twenty, on tax parcel zero nine one zero N zero three zero zero seven zero zero four for twenty nineteen taxes, Azironeas and Mesfoid Abinicio. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Do we need explanation?
All those opposed, motion carries.
Do we need explanation or no?
Sorry?
Item seventy-eight.
I apologize, I had a false info. That's the same thing, it was an error in the assessment about the taxes that's involved.
Item seventy-nine. Order adjudicating and authorizing expenditures listed as necessary to advertise opportunities for resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, payable from oh oh two one oh oh five two two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Seventy-nine. Excuse me, I think, could we separate those?
Oh, yes.
Seventy-nine, removed from the herd, C and E.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to approve with the exception of C and E. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll take item C now, twenty-five hundred for Mental Health Association. Is there a motion to approve?
I have no...
Motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item E, I'm sorry.
Should I do it after, or do you have to do it with the rest?
I know. Well, hold on, we got one more. Item E, ten thousand dollars for the Sea of Stars for MS Aquarium event to be held October first. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Sir?
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Powers?
So I'll pass these pictures down. This is from the John C. Robinson Brown Condor Association. It's that, you know, aviation museum on Pass Road. I know we've already helped them, but they just got an exciting grant to get computer simulations, and I really love this, because it's in a, you know, a low-income area. He lets Boys and Girls Clubs go there, he lets our Coffs and kids go there. So here are pictures to show you.
Francisco's.
Francisco, yeah. He'd need five thousand more, and Supervisor Rocco and I agreed that they will also, she had a great idea to actually put Harrison County Seal to advertise our resources. Anytime the computer comes up for a child to do a simulation or an adult, it'll be state-of-the-art. They've got the grant for it, they need five thousand, but it would be our logo coming up, and that's how they would advertise county resources.
Is there a motion to...
Yes.
Do we have a second? Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Does there a fee to get into that museum to participate in that?
It is very minimal. It's only eight dollars, and they, like I said, they let, I can't see you anymore, I hate this, Marlon. We used to be able to see each other, I can't see anymore.
Can't, way back.
Um, thank you.
Something's happened.
But like I said, if you see those pictures, Marlon, you'll see those are actually Boys and Girls Clubs. He lets go for free, and that's very important, because these children need good places, and they can stay there all day.
The only problem I got, I have, is if there's a fee to get into that facility by anybody that we're spending taxpayers' money for, then I got an issue with that, and I can't.
Well, Mississippi Aquarium.
If it were free, I wouldn't have any problems.
They sure do. Yeah. Very, I'm sure, there's a lot more.
Yeah, we just gave the...
Do what?
For the Mississippi Aquarium, and they...
But that's okay.
No, no, this thing that, this is going to is free for the public.
Oh.
That's, that's, that's free for the public.
Got you. All right.
Okay, so we have.
There's a fee. That's, that's the issue that I have.
Yeah, I understand. It's very minimal, but.
So we have a motion? Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Order, I mean, number eighty. Order finding the twenty-twenty-one assessment rolls have been equalized for the first and second judicial districts and authorizing the clerk of the board to publish the proper notice advising that the assessment rolls are ready for inspection by the public. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Hollman, do you have anything?
I have a request. We have one is the discussing executive session in the matter of economic development law with Bucky's. I think the board needs to hear the discussions with the attorney for Bucky's, Bucky's, excuse me, Bucky's. And the second one be whether or not the board wants to discuss an executive session of plan to purchase the property, the parking lot owned by the community bank. Y'all read?
What's that about?
Well, I think we're, did you go on that? Did we get the final deal?
I don't know. We have a contract working on it. Is the board okay with it? You know, I'm talking about, I'm not for the board.
Is that, is that the one in Bellocie?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought we were just gonna contribute for our parking spaces.
That's what we do, ain't it?
That's, it's not buying the property.
No, we're actually gonna have to buy it because it's bond money.
I think we need to discuss it in the executive session.
Okay, so that's two items for executive session. That was the issue.
That's why I'm gonna ask you. I'm not sure what to do, so I'm gonna talk.
And then I have another personnel matter for executive session, probably HR department. So there's three. Okay, Mr. Lattner, you got anything? Mr. Jones?
No, just one small thing. I think we'll be remote controlled next Monday. I think a few of us will be out of town, so.
What?
Doc, you may be holding the door down.
How do we, how do we handle, but in serious, how do we handle that since we all, four of the five of us will be gone? Can we restate the meeting for a different day?
Change the meeting on two Mondays. Ask the, ask the meet.
So we could call in and recess it and then.
We did this last, like, years ago.
Yeah, you probably could call in and move to recess it to another day.
I was president. We had to do it.
But you're gonna have to hold the meeting on Monday.
But just shorten the agenda and go do it real quick if you want.
Well, all we did was we, we convened and then we reset.
Right.
I think Pat's trying to.
The first two meetings of every month are mandatory.
Okay, what's your deal, Pat?
We have a lot of cases, just like today, on the agenda. We would have to notify those people when that case is gonna come back.
Well, go ahead and notify them. It'll be probably nineteenth. We're about to decide that, or the twentieth. So we've got to require, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
No, no, I just wondered.
Come here. If I made a, if I saw what you're talking about, are there some appeals?
No, sir. But we still do the mail out to everyone who got a notification letter, you know, before and after.
That the board will be acting on their request.
He did have an appeal.
Well, you can continue the appeal. Just go ahead and concur with the others if you want to. It'll take two seconds.
Okay.
They're all gonna be concurrences and the board could just.
No, he has an appeal.
But the appeal can be continued. All you do is go to order continue.
Can I interject? I haven't had a chance to tell all of the Beverly knew, but July twentieth, all the head directors of mental health, Kevin Guster helped us facilitate that. They're gonna be here anyway. So I don't know.
I'm getting to that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, you're, they were trying to say you mentioned the twentieth. I just wanna let them know.
Y'all gonna be back in.
So here's my, here's the discussion. We have had a request by the State Department of Health to meet with the Board of Supervisors only on May the twentieth.
July.
Excuse me, I don't know why I keep saying May, July twentieth. And there'll be a couple of representatives, but all dead people from the State Department of Health. But they were very clear that they only wanted to meet with the Board of Supervisors to hear our concerns. So did y'all want to go ahead and schedule a May meeting for the twentieth?
July twentieth.
July.
For the twentieth.
Yes, I think so. She made those arrangements. We need to have.
I'm thinking May, excuse me. So we got a motion to host a board meeting on a special call meeting July twentieth in Gufford?
Yes.
At nine thirty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Concerning cases, we'll be scheduling that day.
Yes, the appeal.
Okay, what happened to the nineteenth? You gotta meet in Biloxi, you gotta meet in Biloxi, you gotta recess.
Well, that's what I was getting at. So the mental health people have already made a commitment to come on the twentieth, so maybe we could. We just do it all on the twentieth.
The problem is, well, you said the nineteenth earlier. I'm just saying, you're not gonna have on me, if you recess your meeting in Biloxi, you don't say.
Well, we can meet in Biloxi then.
That's what I'm saying.
So we can have the special call meeting on the July twentieth in Biloxi.
That's where else?
So we'll recess the one next Monday and come back on the twentieth.
The recess meeting and the meeting with the, uh.
It's whatever y'all wanna do.
I, I don't think I'd have those two combined. We're talking about a pretty extensive time with mental health.
Probably gonna meet with all board members. You're gonna have an open meeting or go in executive session.
Well, that's what they ask. We're going executive. All right, so I'm back to my original.
I'll look at that.
I don't know if we should.
I'm back to my original then. So we're gonna have a regular special call board meeting on the nineteenth and then the other meeting on the twentieth with the mental health board. Is that what I'm hearing?
Back to that?
They're back to back.
Yeah.
So.
So you're gonna be on the nineteenth in Biloxi, on the twentieth you're gonna be here in Gufford?
Yes.
We'll stick to what we're doing. Monday, it's coming Monday.
So this meeting, Madam President, you could, Madam President, you could recess this particular meeting in the first judicial district until the twentieth. You see what I'm saying? You don't have to call it a special meeting. You can just recess until that day in the first judicial district.
Why?
I thought, I thought you had to do it.
Use your notice. We'll need to use your notice anyway.
I would have to anyway, so.
So we're gonna, Monday, we're gonna recess until the nineteenth.
Correct. And then we're gonna have an additional special call meeting for the twentieth at the request of the State Department of Health.
If you would call it, let's call it an interim meeting. There's a reason to call it an interim meeting with legislation, overage and statute.
Okay, so we need a motion to do this. Very confusing, but should have been something.
Motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Y'all got that? We're gonna meet the nineteenth and the twentieth. Nineteenth in Biloxi, twentieth in Gufford. Okey dokey. I would like to reappoint Mr. Rusty David and Rob Stinson to the Coastal Mississippi Board. Their appointments were up.
We didn't know about that.
Is there a problem?
Rob told me that he was, it was, he wasn't coming.
You don't wanna wait.
Then tell me that. Well, let's do Rusty David.
All right.
I'll hold up on that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. And I will call.
Is that your apartment or is that a board apartment?
No, that's just Rusty David's district.
Is he?
But I know he wants to serve because I just talked to him.
Rusty, yeah.
And we'll hold up on the other man.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then we got special executive session items that we just discussed. Ms. Rocco, do you have?
I do not.
Ms. Powers?
No.
Ms. Pam? Chair?
No ma'am.
Okay, then we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss going into executive session.
Motion.
Board wants to hold that open meeting. I have an objection. Both items qualify for executive session.
That's what we're doing. We have a personnel issue.
Yeah, and one of the personnel problems involved, HR, one is involved and then Bucky's involved, but it's also qualified for executive session. All three qualify, so you can vote.
Perfect. So we have a motion to go into closed, we're, that's what we did. All right, now I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion, go into executive session.
We have a second.
Second, second, third, second.
Fourth.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. By aye, all opposed, motion carries. Ms. Alvin, would you give us a report? Well, actually, we weren't in there.
Twenty-one.
All right, I'll take that back. So we had some personnel issues that we covered. No action taken. We also had a Bucky's.
Discussion about Bucky's. No action was taken.
No actions taken and a discussion about a new parking area.
Community bank's property, purchasing, you made no act.
No action was taken. But now, do we need to take some action on the Bucky's?
Yes.
Yes. I would say like a state.
I didn't write it down.
If you say take.
Make a motion, Harrison County commit to the fifteen, don't say amount.
We're committed. Well, go ahead. She, she's fine.
No, it's okay. You're good.
No, I think you did. Go ahead.
The Harrison County makes a commitment to do the financial, what's necessary for the infrastructure improvements to support Bucky's coming to Harrison County.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
I think it is. We'll draft up an order if the board doesn't mind and send to us.
Yeah.
Language, you know, that helps.
And then on the community bank, you're just gonna send everybody.
Just the clarification on what we're committed to if push comes to shove, the issue of the bonds.
Yeah, I got one, one question.
I'm a girl, I'm sorry.
She had, we're in hand to bonds.
Okay, they're saying, Tixie, what if the project goes over?
Well, I don't know how they answer that except they've estimated fifteen million dollars to complete the.
Well, I know sometimes, I mean, what I'm saying is if it goes over, they're gonna eat that. That's.
The problem is, this is, what's being built is gonna be public infrastructure, the roads and streets, the interchange. It's not gonna be on Bucky's property.
Right.
Whether or not they commit to it is another issue. Now, on Bucky's property itself, they're asking for a TIF. Which the TIF, and the TIF, that will be used to, to put the infrastructure in the property of Bucky's. And then they pay for that through their increased adware taxes.
So before, before we commit.
This will be off of the project size.
I'm just wondering if it runs over.
I don't think Bucky's has been committed to any of that.
Well, they won't. It's gonna be out of the system.
I would think, Tim, before, before there's any realization of anything, wouldn't there be an engineering, uh.
Yes.
Statement as to what the cost would be estimated.
M dot's got.
The commitment that you're making today is not gonna be something that would obligate the county because you can't obligate the county to know what you're doing. You know, at some point in time, there's gonna be a request. This is what it's gonna cost. And you're gonna have to issue bonds or find other funding sources. All you're doing today is really telling Bucky's that the board is committed to funding this project in one form or another, uh, when it reaches that stage. I mean, I don't think there'd be anything legally binding here. It's just a statement by the board that the board intends to financially support.
I guess, my question is if it's, if it's gonna be twenty million or, or we, or we make the twenty million.
I think you would have an option to say no.
Good, I'm just saying.
Yeah, you and I, but I, I think if I understand correctly, they've been in discussions with M dot. M dot, based on the discussions they have, M dot has estimated that that's what it costs.
Right. And then their approval of the permit would require construction plans to be designed by the developer with M dot review process to ensure current specs regarding safety and road rate, geometry, are fulfilled to federal and state standards.
And they're probably gonna ask, they are gonna ask. The one method we discussed with the attorney was that the board would enter into an MOU with M dot to, to build it. And so M, M dot may build it. We may just be providing the funding. So when I say we, the county and whatever other sources, because this project could be an explosion in that quadrant up there around Minja Avenue. So you got Pas Christian would benefit from it. The whole coast would benefit from it.
I was understanding, also in those discussions, uh, Bucky's would, would contract that out. Is it possible to build that interchange and?
I think they probably, there's probably a way to do that, but I, they didn't discuss that.
My understanding was they could do it quicker and cheaper. I don't know. I'm just, no, I, I'm, I'm just saying that that's kind of what my understanding was, but.
Well, we'll get.
We could build that parking lot ourselves, can't we?
I doubt it.
Oh, it's concrete. It's concrete.
They got.
Something we wouldn't be involved in, wouldn't do because of the nature of it. It's come off an interstate, it's more of a.
Okay, so do we.
Y'all voted on it, yeah.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Was there anything else?
Was that it? I think that's it.
Community bank property. We already got the money and that was approved as a garage, but now it'll just be surface parking.
Right, I'll go back. I'll send the board members the restricted covenants so you can look at them for the next meeting and then, well, July, we'll have something on the minutes.
You mean May nineteenth?
No, July nineteenth. You gotta make it.
May nineteenth, May twentieth.
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth, and we'll have something there. Maybe even have community bank representatives there to, plus. You need to look.
Well, they blessed you because that's who sent me the gun, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, they did it, so.
And it's not the locals that, that's the hip guy. Okay, so we don't need any action on that.
We don't need action.
But Ms. Rocco, what else you got?
Uh, car, permission to take automobiles for travel to New Orleans Airport across the state line.
Do we have a motion to interstate travel across the state line to the airport?
We have to have permission to do that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We're going to the Naco.
To the airport.
Where is that?
It's in Maryland, but it's Washington, DC.
You'll go? You didn't know about?
No, but that's okay.
You should go.
I got plenty to do. I would love to travel.
See Trish.
While I always, usually always fly to Gufford, it's a direct flight, it is. So due to time constraints, we'll travel across state line. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. What else? You said you had something for Tim?
Oh, I did, um, but I'll just ask him privately.
Okay.
And then he can tell me.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Yes, I think we wanted to get a clarification from Tim in reference to whether we can allow our human resources, our director to speak directly to the board or through the department aid. I think Marlon can add to that if you want.
Yeah, I mean, it's obvious that we only hire so many. Big Tim can address that, but I have the board can have any employee, I guess, report to him, Tim.
I think so, the.
And it's not, I'm not talking about a daily supervision. I'm talking about that they need someone, that employee, he's a monotony.
I don't think the, I think the board supervisors is entitled to meet with department heads and assistant department heads or anybody in a position such as HR without getting to the, there's a rule that says board members are supposed to make policy, not be involved in the day-to-day operations of the county. You know, that's not, in my opinion, being involved in the day-to-day operations of the county. It's talking to somebody that's in a position of authority over others and the board members have a right in developing their policy to be able to talk to them. Otherwise, how do you develop policy? You can't talk to them. We've, we've been through this where the complaint, talking about the road department and assistant road managers. And there's nothing wrong with that. Same thing applies to HR.
So it's the board's pleasure then. So will she still report to Pam on a day-to-day basis and only come to the board if she needs us?
I think that's up to the board.
That's what I would propose. Does she still report Pam on a day-to-day if it comes to board?
If there's.
If there's any issues.
Any issues.
Okay, that's the opposite of what we said on May tenth, but that's fine. If that's what y'all want.
That's how I took.
The way Ken and Marlon and I.
That's why I keep saying May.
Right.
Ken have two, Ken have one.
So we'll do that?
Well, but Jackie comes straight to us. What's the difference?
Because Jackie's a direct hire.
She's a hire. Here's your people.
No, I understand that too. But he just said legally it's allowed, but.
But she can do it.
He said you could talk to them, but you have to have, you can't get involved in the day-to-day, day-to-day.
So for clarification, she.
You shouldn't be involved in the day-to-day operation of the people we hire directly.
On Jackie or?
We hired him directly. We shouldn't be involved in the day-to-day operation.
That's my point. That's, there's a difference.
So we need to clarify her. So she reports to Pam, but if she has issues, she's free to come talk to the board, right?
That's permissible.
Okay, clear that up. Okay.
Now make sure that Maria has that. So everybody gets a look.
Connie's got something.
Yeah, but.
Okay, is there any other business?
It's better if the board told her because she's getting mixed signals.
We're gonna tell her.
But you two met with her and told her that already and we said it was the opposite.
Well, we just clarified it though. We just did this. We just clarified it.
And then on May tenth, we voted one way and you and Connie went in and we did not vote that way. You and Connie went in and said that she reports to Pam, so.
That was my understanding, but that is.
Correct. So she heard two different things. So now you're saying that your understanding was wrong, but we're still gonna go that way.
Yes.
See, that's my point.
I didn't think I was wrong. My understanding was that she reports to Pam unless she's got issues and she can still come to the board. But the board cannot get in on the day-to-day.
Can we pull the tape from it, Tom? This is not what was said. This is not what was said May tenth.
But we just.
We just clarified with our attorney, though, what we was got, what we were allowed to do and what we were going to do.
And he said we were allowed to do what we agreed to do on May tenth. We're gonna change it anyway.
Cannot.
Tim, didn't you just say?
I don't have a problem. Weekly, the board supervisors are not to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the county. They make policy. That's the general rule. The exception to those rules are department heads and even assistants to department heads.
Correct.
The board members can't develop policy if they cannot talk to those department heads.
So on a day-to-day, Maria, on a day-to-day, from what I'm hearing him say, we can't get in the day-to-day business. So you go to Pam and you and Pam talk about what y'all need to do, but you're welcome to talk to the board for any issues.
If the department head has a problem, I think the board has authority to talk to those people. You can't develop policy unless you know. So, um, I don't, how you divide that up is like, it's, it's one of those kind of nebulous areas. It's hard to tell until you know. The most famous AG opinion on it is a supervisor that was going out running the backhoe every day. And so they said, you, and somebody complained about it. Why you would complain about a supervisor running a backhoe, I don't know. But somebody, apparently the backhoe operator didn't like it, so they said, you can't do that. You're, you should make policy.
That's not in the union system, right?
Yeah, the union, the E system, you can.
But it's, it's not realistic to say that a supervisor cannot deal with county employees on needed issues from time to time. Shouldn't be out telling them what road to work on, not work on. It's everyday situation. It doesn't mean if you got a bad road.
Point is, I think that the employees, both county administrator and the, uh, HR director should know what their positions are, what their responsibilities are. That, number one, the HR director's not a secretary or just an assistant to the county administrator. She has some autonomy, just like Tim has in his job at, as road department and the county engineer. There's some autonomy in those positions.
Agreed.
You can't, you can't, you cannot expect somebody to be a department head and have to answer to all kind of details, et cetera, to, to the county administrator. I don't think the county administrator would even want that. I hope not anyway.
At the end of the day, the department heads have to report to Pam, the county administrators.
You say report.
I mean, that's.
For example, they have their, I don't know if it's, it's a, if it's a correct analogy, but, for example, when I was superintendent, principals of the schools had some autonomy.
Correct.
And, and had control over their school.
And their teachers.
And I, and their teachers. And I, uh, I couldn't interfere as superintendent with certain of those autonomous and legal things that they had. For example, they had to recommend the teachers to me. I didn't have, so I'm telling you that as professional people, they shouldn't know where that line is.
Yes.
She's, she's, both of them should know. And let's see if they can work it out and do what they're supposed to do, both of them.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to, we're gonna adjourn the meeting and our next full meeting will be on the nineteenth in Biloxi.
You gonna have a meeting? No, you gotta have one.
Gotta have one, but.
Oh, so.
But that's gonna be by telephone. As I understand, you're gonna open the meeting and then recess it to the nineteenth.
Correct.
Twenty.
Somebody.
Nineteenth. Then on the twentieth.
Twentieth, we're coming to Gufford.
An interim meeting.
An interim meeting on the twentieth for Department of Mental Health. So we need to have notices out.
Twenty.
The twentieth. That'll be on the.
So it'll be today.
Do I have to be there, Tim, for that?
For the, the nineteenth meeting.
That's a regular board meeting.
A regular board meeting, as long as there's a quorum. No, you don't have to be there. There has to be a quorum.
That's a twentieth, definitely, please.
Oh, oh, wait, wait. You're gonna be live. Everybody else is gonna be by phone.
Well, that's my point. Do I, do I have to be there?
I think.
Why would I have to personally be there if they own?
Yeah, we're all on the phone.
I'll research it, but I think if you're.
Research it, let me know, because I don't wanna drive to Biloxi for a five, a five minute.
Yeah, that's kinda.
Just saying, I don't know. You just can't be on the phone. You can't be on the phone either.
You gotta feed a cow.
I do know what that.
I can see if somebody physically has to be there. I can't understand it because individually, I'm not gonna make up the quorum.